Item 10, Discussion and Possible Action. A, Discussion and Possible Action Regarding Approving a Contract with Friendswood Historical Society in the Amount of $15,000 for the Maintenance and Preservation of Historical Sites in the City and Authorizing the Mayor to Execute the Contract.
Motion to approve.
Motion in second. Any discussion? All in favor? Item B, Discussion and Possible Action Regarding Adopting the Updated Appointment Policy. I get a motion?
Motion to approve.
I've got a motion in second. Rod, you want to?
Counsel, last month during the workshop, we talked about some minor changes to the appointment policy, changing the Planning and Zoning Commission's regular meetings from the first and third Thursdays to the second and fourth Thursdays to reflect the single public hearing. There was mention of changes to the zoning board of adjustments, which did not take place when we discussed it was EBOA. They weren't interested in adding some additional permanent members, and then some other ministerial-type changes, adding an additional position to keep Friendswood beautiful. But that was the extent of the changes.
Okay. Discussion? All in favor? Okay. C, Discussion and Possible Action Regarding an Amendment to the Interlocal Agreement between Galveston County and the City of Friendswood for the 2017 road bonds. I'm going to get a motion. Motion in second. Rod, again, do you want to?
Yes, sir, and I'll be brief. Counsel may recall, in April of 2000, in May of 2018, we entered into an interlocal agreement with Galveston County for the construction of Friendswood Lake Boulevard, where it currently dead-ended near North Eagle Creek, south to where West Ranch built their section of Friendswood Lakes Boulevard. This was a result of the 2017, November 2017, Galveston County Road Project Bonds. The county included within their bond program 3.57 million. City of Friendswood offered to put up $1 million towards that project if the county would match it with an additional million, bringing the total funding for the project up to 5.57 million. This agreement with Galveston County is for the construction of the roadway. We had a separate agreement with the joining landowners, known as a development agreement, for them to contribute right-of-way for the roadway, as well as to donate $200,000 per project to, for a total of $600,000 towards this overall endeavor. Since our interlocal agreement was approved by Galveston County, there's been a need for an amendment to it to include the extension of water and sanitary sewer lines in conjunction with this effort to make sure that while we're out there, let's go ahead and put these facilities in so that it's most efficient. We're nearing completion of the design. I believe that it's at 95% and hope to have it bid out here within the next three to four weeks timeframe with a contract left for construction in January or February of next year. Until the project's actually bid, I can't tell you how much it's going to cost, obviously, but we hope to be within budget.
Great. Any discussion? Questions?
Yes.
We didn't approve it yet. All in favor? Now we approve it. All right. Item 11, Resolutions, Consideration and Possible Action Regarding the Following Resolution Number AR-2019-33, A Resolution of the City of Friendswood to Support the Galveston Bay Estuary Programs, the Galveston Bay Plan, Second Edition, Comprehensive Conservation and Management Plan for the Galveston Bay Ecosystem.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion in second.
Just a brief background, Mayor and Counsel. This program is an initiative that's undertaken by a number of agencies, including Houston-Galveston Area Council, as well as our Gulf Coast Authority, who manages and operates our wastewater treatment plant on Bay Area Boulevard. This is not intended to add any additional layer of environmental regulation. In fact, it only re-enumerates what we're already obligated to follow, both from the EPA, as well as the Texas Commission of Environmental Quality. In essence, any discharges, whether sanitary or storm sewer, should not be illicit to where it pollutes the receiving streams. This does not, in any way, shape, or form inhibit drainage projects along Clear Creek that the City of Friendswood is pursuing.
Okay. Any discussion? All in favor? Okay. Resolution Number 2019-34, Resolution of the City Council of the City of Friendswood, Texas, Approving a Contractual Agreement for Dispatching Services Between Windsor EMS, Inc. and the City of Friendswood, authorizing the Mayor to execute and the City Secretary to attest the agreement.
Motion to approve.
Motion in second.
Mayor and Counsel, this item, as well as an item under the consent agenda, is related to the dispatching agreement between the City of Friendswood and Windsor EMS. Previously, well, let me back up. The area in question for this dispatching services is Harris County MUD 55, predominantly Heritage Park, just outside of Friendswood city limits. Friendswood currently dispatches for the Forest Bend Volunteer Fire Department, which provides the fire response services to this area. Previously, this area was served by Clemson Clear Lake Emergency Medical Corp. for EMS services. Unfortunately, though, that group is dissolving, and so the Harris County MUD 55 executed a contract with Windsor to provide EMS services. Fortunately, they didn't have dispatch capabilities, and they looked to the City of Friendswood for assistance. I mentioned the item later on in the consent agenda. The services started October 1st, so the Mayor had to sign it, and we're seeking your ratification of his signature later on tonight.
Okay. Any questions, discussion on that? All in favor? You guys are easy. Maybe. Okay. Item 12, Ordinances, Consideration and Possible Action Regarding the Following. Ordinance Number T-2019-37, Second and Final Reading of an Ordinance Amending the Zoning Classification for a Track or Parcel Containing 156.4717 Acres Located Along the Future Friendswood Lakes Boulevard Between West Ranch and Friendswood Lakes Subdivisions, Friendswood, Galveston County, Texas, to Change From Single Family Residential SFR and Planned Unit Development PUD 2019-11 To a Revised Planned Unit Development for Residential Development Avalon at Friendswood.
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Motion in second. Discussion?
Yes.
John?
Yes. Okay. So I've stated, you know, every time for nine years, that the City of Friendswood has zoning ordinances and codes that we must adhere to. They're there for a reason. I think we muddy the waters when we start using PUDs to develop property in a manner in which it's already zoned to develop. So real quickly, if you look in our zoning ordinances, which you can find on the web, under the PUD, it says, "In no case shall a PUD be used for the sole purposes of circumventing the intent of city ordinances or plans." Again, this is a single-family residential development, nothing else. It's not garden homes. It's not commercial property. It is single-family residential on property that's already zoned that way. C, The general purpose of the PUD districts are severalfold: to encourage unified design and development of tracts of land incorporating a variety of uses. There's a single use. Can't check that box. To accommodate innovation and development by modifying the city's land use and development regulations. Again, it is a single use that it's already zoned for. To provide for and protect public health, safety, and general welfare of the city. Can't check that box. To minimize negative impacts on developments, especially those related to drainage, environment, traffic, public service-related facilities. Can't check that box. To protect and enhance aesthetic and visual qualities of development. Doesn't fit. To provide development of sites in a suitable fashion when such development is restricted by such factors as location and shape. Doesn't fit. To promote economic development in accordance with the city's plans for such. This development is single-family residential development on single-family residential zoned property, where the city has a code and ordinance defining what the requirements are for single-family residential. It's 2.7 homes per acre. It's 11,600 feet per lot. That's laid out. It's specific. It fits this development. The problem is, is that because even though none of those fit, we're allowing the developer to use a PUD, he's going to use 50, 55, 60-foot lots. I'm a business guy. I get it. If I have to put 270 houses on a piece of property, and I can get by by using a PUD so that a third of the property can remain as green space, yet counting the density requirement, and put all the homes on two-thirds, well, then I save money. And I make more money. And that makes more sense if I'm a business guy. If I'm a city guy, and I'm responsible for making sure that developers who come to us for developments are all treated by the same zoning documents, then we would never even have these discussions. So we've got a single-family development going on a single-family zoned piece of property, and we're going to allow that developer to use 50, 55, 65-foot lots. Yet, planning and zoning has already said that they, well, in a three-to-three tie, that a developer that is proposing single-family residential lots of 90 by 130 on all but 43 acres of his development, which is 194 acres, and putting smaller garden homes on 43 acres, didn't get approval. Well, I would say that if you go to the garden home section of the ordinance, the development for the garden homes doesn't fit. It doesn't provide a buffer from an existing or a future development. It doesn't meet any of the requirements there. So it's very simple to govern when you apply the rules the same across the board. It's very easy. It's not our position, this is how this country has gotten into the shape that it is. We're not responsible or in a position to vote for those things that we like, or that we think are attractive, or that we think are a good fit. We're responsible for voting on the things as they apply to our ordinances. If we don't like our ordinances, we, as a governing body, are in the exact position, the perfect position, to go back and say, "We're going to change these requirements." That's what this governing body can do. But when we sit here and say that we're going to allow people to apply, to do a development which a piece of property is already zoned for, but we're not going to make them meet our ordinance requirements, in this case, as it pertains to lot size, well, then everything is gray. Which is why, for nine years, we've turned down every developer but the Friendswood trails since I've been up here. Because every developer's been told the same thing. This is our ordinance. I'm not doing any of this to, you know, to talk bad about the developer, or what the developer's proposing, or the landowner wants to see done with their property. That's not my axe to grind. I think every property owner should be able to try to get the best profit amount for their property that they're entitled to. And I don't think any governing body should get in that way. But when there's rules, you have to abide by the rules. And to me, it's that simple. And so how anybody can read what the general definitions of the PUD are, justify allowing a development to be developed outside of the ordinance that it's already zoned for by using a PUD, I don't understand that. I don't know how, yes, I get it. It's been stated before. We have a PUD. Every developer is authorized to apply for a PUD. Sure, they are. And it's black and white what you can use a PUD for. And you check the box. And when you check the box, you find out whether or not it applies. It doesn't apply. This development doesn't meet any of those. So we arbitrate, this is how we get in trouble as a government, every level of government. We pick and choose what we like, instead of applying the same rules evenly across the I've said it. Everybody knows. Everybody is tired of hearing it that's up here, listening to me say it. I just can't emphasize, for me personally, for what I feel the responsibility of me, as a member of the governing body, how important it is that we abide by the rules, and if we don't like the rules, then we engage in the process to modify them. If you want 55-foot lots to be the minimum lot size, then I'm all for us having a discussion and a vote to go do that. I'll vote against it, but we can still have that debate and go and change the lot size requirements. When you allow people to do it through a PUD, when the PUD says specifically, "You're not allowed to use the PUD for that purpose," you're defeating our rules. So now we have a guy that applied for garden home zoning change, which he should do, if that's what he wants to do. But a garden home is, says what it's used for, and it's nothing. It may have limited suitability for residential development due to geographical limitations. Nope. Have portions of the property subject to flooding. Nope. Adjacent to a district of a different zoning designation for which the development as MFR-GHD would be appropriate as a buffer. So why doesn't he just go back and apply for a PUD? And then instead of 65% of the lots being 90 by 130, he can go put as many 55-foot lots on there as he wants and leave the rest of it as green space. We have rules. They're there for a reason. We're not here to vote on those things that we like or that we find attractive. We're here to find out whether those things meet our ordinances. And in this case, it doesn't.
Well, I guess I'm going to jump on his bandwagon, too. So if you don't mind, I'd like to go over a couple of things under the general requirements and design criteria. The subdivision shall conform to the comprehensive plan of the city, as well as all duly adopted design criteria of the city, which shall be kept on file with the city engineer and available to the public. The city engineer shall maintain the design criteria and propose such changes to them from time to time, so that they are equivalent or more stringent, equivalent or more stringent than those in the area. Provided, however, city council may throw out the design criteria. Just chunk it out. You can now take the zoning book. I'd throw it out, too, but it's too heavy, and I didn't want to break the paper open or anything like that. Hurt my shoulder. But here we have, the city council can change the design criteria. They can change the zoning book of ordinance by two ways. Planned unit development. And I'd like to ask if we've already passed a specific use for this permit, a specific use permit for this PUD? I think that question needs to be answered. Because a PUD is a unique zoning qualification and shall be granted only when the Planning and Zoning Commission and city council determine that the applicant has submitted a complete application containing sufficient detail. Well, I'm not sure what kind of a PUD this is. Is it of detailed, or is it of conceptual nature? I know the Exhibit B is of a conceptual nature. It's not a detailed design plan. And now, city council has thrown out the design criteria. It's thrown out the book of ordinances, and now we've become the ordinance writers. I've read through some of the things that we're requiring, but we now are going to let them build 65% of the house on a lot that's smaller, not 35% as is codified in our ordinance book. We're changing things up to allow for a planned unit development, where I actually commend the man who comes in here with a residential development called a garden home development, and it's codified in our book. The design criteria tells him exactly how to build it, exactly what to do, and he's already going to do it, I'm sure, with the minimum qualifications. He's not changing the standards now that the city council and us have decided to change the councils under a planned unit development, but he's not doing that. He's coming up here, and he's saying, "I'm going to build this garden home development exactly how the city requires me to, and y'all can shoot me down or not shoot me down." But I'm telling you, we've got two different kinds of application, and I'm not even sure what kind of application that Avalon has submitted. But I will say this. I have been very hard on Connie Breakbill and her family, and Avalon, in that I have demanded that we should build single-family residential homes on 90-foot lots. I would be a low-life, sorry, no-good hypocrite if I turned around now and I said, "Okay, Sterling builders, I'm going to allow you to build garden homes and not do it for Connie Breakbill." So I can't support that. I can't support that, and there's equally hypocritical for those.
Point of order. Point of order. We're talking about two different agenda items here.
Yeah, I'm just, I'm talking about the PUD. But I do know that that has come up.
Talking about the garden homes, which is another item.
Okay, I'll address that, then. I do think that we are setting ourselves up for failure when we decide how we're going to write the ordinance. Now, each and every one of us up here are zoning engineers. We're going to have to decide, what is the open space? What is the proper drainage now? You say you're going to apply all the rules and regulations of the ordinance book. Well, for which residence? We've got several of them here. We've got single-family residential, single-family residential estate. We've got moderate. We've got multifamily residential, and we've got garden homes. Are we going to apply garden home regulations to this new PUD? Are we going to apply single-family residential to this new PUD? Well, we can't, because they're not the same. They're different. So we're rewriting the ordinance book when we approve a PUD. We're all rewriting it, and we're all becoming engineers, and we're all becoming design profile criteria people. Where all of this has already been written for us, guys? And if there's people that are willing to build under the terms and conditions that we have already got in our zoning book of ordinances and our design criteria manual that we work hard to get into place, then let's not change it. Let them build under the terms and conditions of what we have in our book, and don't go planning a new unit development. That's my position.
Anybody else? We got a motion in second. All in favor? Opposed? Four to three. Ordinance Number T-2019-41, First Reading of an Ordinance Amending Section 30-84 and Section 30-118 of the Code of Ordinances Pertaining to the International Fire Code and Life Safety Code, respectfully, respectively.
Motion to approve.
Motion in second.
Mayor and Counsel, briefly, this item was discussed last month during a workshop. We're currently under the 2012 code, and it's the staff's recommendation to go to the 2018 codes for fire and life safety codes, namely, to be in compliance with the ISO criteria when they evaluate us for insurance requirements.
Okay. All in favor? Opposed? Six to one. Ordinance Number T-2019-42, First Reading of an Ordinance Amending the Zoning Classification for a Track or Parcel Containing 43.0673 Acres of Land, More or Less, Being a Portion of a Called 194.21-Acre Track Described as Track A, As Conveyed to Yellowstone Hill Country Ranching LLC in Clerk's File Number 2010059686. Can we make these numbers bigger? Of the Galveston County Deed Records, Galveston County, Friendswood, Texas, Along the Future Friendswood Lakes Boulevard, As More Fully Described Herein, To Change Single Family Residential SFR To Multifamily Residential Garden Home District.
Motion to approve.
Got a motion?
Second.
Motion in second. Good evening, Mr. Hill.
How are y'all?
Great.
Thank you for seeing us. So after all that, you know, I'm here to ask you to look at this thing, this plat, as on its own merit, and look at the laws that you have just stated and where you fit. And I understand you might not think we fit all of them, but we fit a lot of them. So when we started Sterling Creek, we started with 90-foot lots, and we moved forward with that. The bond passed. We then got to see that the road's going to go, and we worked with the county and the city to get our tie-ins. So then we lay out the rest of our land. We lay out the land, and we end up with 90 and 100-foot lots, so we exceed the criteria in a lot of ways. And then we look at this last section here, that we're looking to put 60 by 140-foot lots. So Counsel Professor Fawn, you talk about the garden home minimum is 6,000 feet. We're at 8,400 feet. So that allows homeowners to come in, build up to 5,000 feet if they choose, if we comply with the 60-40 rule, and then also have pools. These are deeper lots. So it brings, Counselwoman Scott, our density to 1.9 per acre. If we did all 90-foot lots, we're at 1.8 per acre. So we are well below your 2.7. So we qualify in a lot of ways. We would end up with 300 lots total if we did all 90 foot, or we do 282 lots if we add this section that's 60-foot. We abut a power line. Not a power line, we abut a transmission line. I think that's a hardship. It may not fit in your category for garden home, but it does with me in doing this business for 22 years and trying to sell houses, and people looking at them and finding something. Our target price range is 500,000 for these lots. If you look at our current section at 650,000, the numbers match. So we're still putting in this last section, which I think is the only one we're talking about, $47 million on the tax rolls for the city, not to mention 18 more impact fees, 18 more sales tax, and all that it is, in my mind, the better use of the land. I have stood up here and advocated for 90-foot lots for a long time, in a very passionate way, as you guys did, and I appreciate that. I sit here today and tell you in a humble way, this is the best use of that land. This is what I think is best, and I feel like that if you look at the overall project, we're 65% 90-plus, 35% 60s. And overall, that exceeds a lot of the other guys around. There's a lot of garden homes districts, Autumn Creek, a lot of bigger houses over there. Works well. There are some, it's a garden home district, but they're not building what people think are the garden home houses. As far as drainage, we do not have a drainage issue because we fixed it. South Eagle Creek, you could step across it. When we're done, it'll, will enhance all of the drainage district for San Joaquin and upstream. We're helping. This is on the Galveston County Consolidated Drainage District Plan, has been for 10 years for them to come fix it. We're doing it as a developer. I understand the city is helping developers across the board. We're both giving on that. We do have a small park up in the front that we're looking to do as a pocket park. All of our residents can walk around all of our ponds. They can enjoy everything. Nothing is excluded to Sterling Creek. So, you know, as we look at it from our perspectives, from a heart perspective, I have multiple family members living garden homes around the city. I have family members that are growing up, having babies, and want to have a little bit bigger house. I have family members that have big houses, and they want a smaller one. This is a nice option. Again, we are still producing the 90 and 100-foot lots that no one else is doing at a vast percentage. But in this situation, this is the best use of the land that we believe, and that's why we come and ask for your vote.
Thanks, sir. Discussion?
Well, I just want to say, Adam, I commend you for coming to the Planning and Zoning in this council, not with a planned unit development, but with an actual residential development that's codified in our book, and it's in our design criteria. You're not throwing that away. You're actually using it. And instead of 6,000 square-foot lots, you're making them 8,400 square-foot lots, and you're putting them on at a 50% house to size of the lot? You're not doing 65% like other subdivisions might be doing. You're following the rules and regulations of the residential development for garden homes in this smaller part of your development, correct?
Yes, sir.
Well, like I said, I commend you for that. I've just been too vocal in the past in regards to 90-foot lots, that I just would feel hypocritical if I supported you on that, and I couldn't do the same for Mr. Breakbill. So thank you for bringing.
And there was only six Planning and Zoning members there. Had we had seven, we had a shot. Had we had seven, we had a shot. I tried to flip a coin.
I don't, I don't understand what planning and zoning is doing, to tell you the truth. I really don't.
Trish.
Yes. So I've done a lot of research on this because I am so new, and I appreciate the time that you gave me, Adam, and spent one-on-one. I really appreciate the time that Aubrey's given me, over an hour and a half going through different things, the legal department, Mo, everyone, to tell me what we legally can do. I am sympathetic to trying to follow rules that we have on the book, but I also realize that that is the, we have that discretion to say yes or no on these things. I'm going to support it for lots of different reasons, but I am asking, and I have asked Mo, that we put this on as a workshop item in the future so that we can discuss this or see if we want P and Z to look at this again on how these are written, so it can be more consistent and avoid this kind of thing that we're going through the last few times. I did go back to history, though, to 1970, when the lot sizes were 70 feet, because I started asking the question, this is where I started, "Why do we have a 90-foot lot? Why is that ordinance there?" It's not a moral issue. It's not a right or wrong issue. So why do we have this? And I called people that served on council or in the city government many decades, I mean, several decades ago, to get different perspectives of what their recollection was. A lot of it was to limit growth. That was the number-one answer I got, was to limit growth, to slow down growth. That train has left that station. We're already, that's gone. It's a different time today. So I think it's time to look at the needs of the market and our community and the demographics of our community changing. I also looked at all the different subdivisions in our community that have smaller lot sizes. So I was under the impression that West Ranch was like the first, and then the Trails, you know, when they had requested it, they were like the second. That is not true. We have subdivisions all over this city with smaller lots than 90 by 130. And they may have fit some criteria, or they may have fit the criteria that was in place at the time. I don't know all of that history, but I do think that, I appreciate the comments that Councilmember Scott said about following what's on the books, but also appreciate the fact that we have that authority to make these decisions and what we think is best for our community. But I do really want to suggest that this be on a future workshop, that we have the opportunity to discuss it.
Yes, ma'am.
Adam, thanks for coming in front of us. I appreciate your candor on this, and I just want to say that I've always thought you were like the epitome of the best developer we could possibly have. What you build is gorgeous. There's houses all over the city, and they're fabulous, and you have increased our tax base tremendously, which has been a benefit of all. And I think it's very interesting, and I appreciate you, you know, having come in a couple of years ago and really, you know, laid it to us about this, and now you come back. And I just want to point out, when we have all the things we've complained about, out-of-town developers and all that coming in and doing things wrong, we have a local developer that does great stuff, and he is telling us, "Yeah, can't continue to always have to have 90-foot lots. It doesn't work on these developments." And he's telling us the same thing that we heard from Avalon and we've heard from others. I believe it. I believe it. So I'm gonna support this as well.
Sally.
I, too, would like to say, I appreciate your time, one-on-one. I have been a proponent of versatility, variety of size of lots, counter to the 90-foot. I was on P and Z when the Trails came through, also the Whitcomb property, so there's been some other opportunities. And I would say that if I had my druthers, I wish that your smaller homes were closer to the road versus in the back, but with those power lines running through, I understand that, and I don't think folks are gonna spend 3/4 to $1 million on a home when they've got power lines or transmission lines in their backyard, so I get that. But I do think, and I think this need has been there for many years, we need garden homes. We need town homes, because there are folks who either are just getting started, maybe can't afford the larger homes with larger lots, but I also know there's folks who don't want to leave town, like your folks and mine, who are still here, probably aren't gonna go anywhere, and they may not always want to keep up the large property with all the maintenance that's involved with that. So I appreciate that you're stepping out there and you're taking this on, because I do think we need to be able to offer this to our citizens. So thank you for what you're doing, and I will be supporting it.
Thank you.
One last comment, Mayor.
Trish.
P and Z, thank you, Mayor.
Comment, number two.
P and Z, well, they're short comments. P and Z is doing a fantastic job, by the way. They're very thoughtful, very reflective, very smart people, so I want to compliment them for the job that they do, meeting twice a week and trying to deal with these issues.
You guys meet twice a week?
Twice a week. Twice a week for nothing.
Now, I want to thank you, Adam, for coming up here also. Like Trish, I'm still trying to learn some of this lingo on some of these zoning things, but I believe Councilmember Graffon did a good job of pointing out a few things that, while I was against the other development, I do think that you fit more into the box. And as Trish stated, I think we just gotta find a little more consistency going forward as we plan, and the world's evolving, our city's evolving, and like you said, you'd probably be the last person you would expect to be up here asking for this change, so I'm gonna support this also.
Yeah, thanks, Adam. All in favor? Opposed?
Thank you, all.
All right. Back to reading in public. Ordinance number T-2019-43, first reading of an ordinance amending Chapter 86 Utilities of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Friendswood by amending Sections 86-30 through 86-34, amending the water conservation plan. Got a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion in a second. Renee, you gonna educate us?
What you have before you, Councilman Mayor, is a proposed renewal of our water conservation plan, and by ordinance, it was the last adopted in 2014 to remain within compliance with TCEQ and also in coordination with the Texas Water Development Board, and also to conserve our water supply in the facilities. It's a plan that's put before TCEQ, and it's renewed every five years, and that's what's before you this evening.
Thank you, sir. Any questions for Renee? Discussion? All in favor? All right. Item E, ordinance number T-2019-44, first reading of an ordinance adopting the 2018 versions of the International Building Code, International Plumbing Code, International Mechanical Code, International Fuel Gas Code, International Energy Conservation Code, and International Residential Code for one and two-family dwellings, including appendices as noted, and adopting the 2017 version of the National Electrical Code, adopting local amendments and clarifying the establishment of the Construction Board of Adjustment and Appeals.
Motion to approve.
Motion in a second.
Mayor and council, this is similar to Item B that was discussed last month in the workshop setting, taking our codes from the 2012 to the 2018, and then the 2011 to 2017 on the National Electric Code. We need to be within a six-year span, and these codes are published every three years in order to maintain an ISO rating that the city maintains lower insurance premiums.
Thank you. Okay, any discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Six to one. All right, item 13, communications from the mayor and council members. Any volunteers? Steve?
I just wanted to thank all you up here that participated in Histerween. We had Brent and Robert and the mayor and myself this year. They were all, had active roles, and it went really well. We had a really good one. And Councilman Graffon was excellent as one of the three husbands back there, and he looked like he was having a lot of fun, and so was Brent, so thank you, guys.
You did an excellent job, too, Steve. Nobody say anything about me, but-
Hey, Steve, I want to thank you for mentioning me and also encouraging me to go do that because I wouldn't have done it otherwise. And I'm telling you, the Historical Society puts on a really good event, and we had a ton of people come through there. And yes, I got to remember the life of David Leavelle and my friend Brent over here. He was Edward Bradshaw, and it was just really neat. And your son Jim was there, and we were, of course, remembering the life of Elma Smith, and, you know, something that I did not even know, and I've been a resident of Friendswood for years and years and years. So thank you for encouraging me to do it.
I'm a resident every year now.
But it was a lot of fun, and the Historical Society does a wonderful job of what they do. They put on a really great program for everybody.
I would just like to reiterate what Councilmember Hank said earlier. I grew up, I started out in P and Z, and I really learned a lot of valuable training that I think has served me well here on council. I just want to thank y'all for the great job you do, and I know that we've had some very dicey issues before P and Z here of late, and I appreciate that you all really do your due diligence, and I do appreciate your advice in council, because I do come to y'all individually and sometimes a couple of you together, too. But I just want to say thank you. Y'all do an excellent job, and I appreciate it, and I hope y'all will keep up the good work. We appreciate you very, very much.
So I love going to those weekly P and Z meetings.
Twice a week.
Twice a week, excuse me, twice a week. And KFB, thanks. Thanks, I don't have anything else to say.
John.
Thursday, November 7th, Senior Activity Building, Veterans Day celebration, get by there. I think it's from 11:00 to 1:00. So always a great time, good opportunity to thank someone who served and fought for our nation, and I think it's free lunch.
Free lunch for veterans.
So I never pass up the opportunity for a free meal, so I'll see you there Thursday.
No mention of the Marine Corps birthday Sunday?
Semper Fi. Brent?
I just, I wanted to, I know former Mayor Smith's gone, but that Historical Society is a very neat organization, and I appreciate being invited out there to that event. For y'all that hadn't been to that, it's a very, very neat event for, if you don't know the history of this city and how we got here. Also, I was just really impressed reading the senior, or listening to the senior report, just a lot of wonderful things that we continue to do for our city that I think a lot of us might not know how much we do, and that's a growing segment of this city, and I just think it's very important we keep trying to push more through that because it's a wonderful organization, and thanks to all the volunteers and everybody that helps out in this city. And remember well and vote tomorrow so we can see what the future holds. Thanks.
Oh, that's right. I'll just say, Saturday morning, 8 o'clock, KEMA Boardwalk, we're gonna walk, American Heart Association Heart Walk. We got a little challenge amongst the mayors around the lake for raising funds for this, so we call it the Mayors with Heart Challenge, and so I'm gonna be out there dressed warmly because Heart Walk is always on the coldest Saturday of the year, apparently, at least my experience. I enjoyed being part of Histerween, although for two years now, I've kind of traipsed around out there in the water. It's kind of wet. Maybe we could call it something else, like Hister Fourth of July, I don't know. Sometime when it's not muddy and rainy out there. Just a thought.
Do you believe the word Histerween is a unique word in open heart and social, so nobody else is appropriate? Considering we were going against a World Series game, and it was a little cold, but that's a pretty good year. And just to let you know, most of the proceeds we donate to the high school, student council, and business professionals' clubs because they're the ones that help to put on. So this is our ninth year, and in nine years, we donated over $40,000 back to the high school through that event, so.
Steve, you do a great job with all those events. I mean that, and I appreciate that.
We'll get you out there one of these years.
No, you won't.
When Jim Hill was on here, he-
World Series.
When Jim Hill was on here, he said he would never, he didn't want to spend any time in that cemetery before it was his time.
Very good, very good. Well, hey, I make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Let me say one last thing about Phil Raddesso, the new chair of Zoning Board of Adjustment.
Oh, yeah.
Congratulations, Phil, thank you. The last guy to step back and say, "Not it," you know.
Right, right, right. Through the straw, straw.
Okay, so I got a, I heard a motion in a second for consent agenda. All in favor? Turned.